Good evening, this is the City of Everett Planning Commission, meeting for Tuesday, June 16 of 2020. Welcome, everyone. We'll first just go through a roll call and then I'll get through some instructions. So Kathy, if you could call roll?
Sure. Chair Yanisak?
Present.
Commissioner Labra?
Present.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale? He may be without a mic. I know that he's here. Commissioner Zalinski?
Here.
Commissioner Beck?
That the properties about the Evergreen Way, which is a major transit corridor. There is commercial currently to the north. The proposed small expansion of the two parcels would be for the existing dental chiropractic building and their parking lot. The church is looking at potentially selling the property to be redeveloped in the future as multifamily. And this evening, we might have the applicants on the phone and they might want to speak to what their future plans are. The church property serves as a buffer transition for single-family neighborhoods east of the site from the heavy traffic on Evergreen Way. But it is a single-family neighborhood across the street on the east side of Rucker Avenue. And then the boundary to the south, there is really a natural boundary consisting of a steep slope and wooded ravine. The staff report was prepared a while ago. It includes the required rezon narrative prepared by the applicant. Staff recommends approval of these proposed map changes. There have been no public comments received at the time of the staff report, nor am I aware of any public comments. Nothing has come into my email. So the planning commission is required to hold a public hearing on this matter this evening. And then there is a draft resolution for your consideration. Again, though, the applicant may want to speak before you ask questions. So Chair Yanisak, I'll pause here and let you see who would like to speak.
Sure. I guess I'm not sure how we could identify them at this point, or perhaps Kathy already knows, but if the applicant is present tonight, or the representative and wanted to address the commission, this would be an opportunity to do that. Kathy, do we have a way of knowing if they're identifying them?
I, yeah, I don't have any way because I don't know who the applicant is, so.
So can I chime in here? This is Brian Caleb from Insights Engineering. So I represent the applicant.
Okay.
So I don't, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Yeah, thank you. Maybe can you just say your name again and repeat who you're with?
This is Brian Caleb from Insights Engineering.
Okay, go ahead, Mr.
Adam, Chair.
Yes.
If we're going to take any input, including the applicant, let's open the public hearing then, before you do that.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. You're perfect. Can we have, do we need a motion for that?
I don't think you need a motion. Just declare the hearing open.
Okay. Then at this point, because we're taking comment, we will open the public meeting on this matter, the public hearing on this matter. And we will then hear from the applicant's representative. Go ahead, Mr. Caleb.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I don't have a lot to say because I want to thank Karen and the other staff at City of Everett for taking the application in and doing the hard work that they do. They have good staff reports. It kind of outlines everything we were thinking as far as why this is a good fit for the area, for the multifamily in this area that's naturally buffered between Evergreen and Rucker. And to the south, there's a natural vegetated buffer to buffer us from the single-family to the south and the commercial to the north. So I really don't have a lot to say other than that. And then staff recommendations, I would open it up to questions from the planning commission, if they have any later.
Maybe since we have you, Mr. Caleb, here, I could open up now at this time. Is anyone on the, any planning commissioners have questions for Mr. Caleb as the representative of the applicant?
This is Michael Finch. I have a few questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'm looking at the parcel map and the parcels on Rucker, 4516 Rucker, and the parcel immediately south. What is the, what's the rationale behind including those two in the rezon request? They currently appear to be single-family homes that are rented out.
Yes, they're single-family homes. They're not in the best shape as far as the houses.
I concur.
So they, they need some work in order to be brought up to probably neighborhood standards. So with the ownership of the property all being concurrent with the church, we were thinking that it would be more valuable and you'd get more housing if you included those properties in the multifamily.
I see. And looking at the two parcels that are to the west of those single-family homes, what is the depth, the average depth of those two parcels? The ones fronting Evergreen and the interior parcel?
Depth north to south or east to west?
East, west.
Guess I don't have that information.
I guess the point of my question is to understand whether or not those two parcels that are fronting Rucker are necessary or accretive to any redevelopment of the other two parcels further to the west. That was the point of my question. The other question I had was on 4524 Rucker, that seems to be a different owner. Was that owner contacted and asked to join in this process?
Yes, that owner had signed on the application and participated in this application.
Okay, all right. So 4524 is proposed to be rezoned or is not proposed to be rezoned?
The 4524 is supposed to be rezoned to commercial.
I think the map that we were provided does not accurately reflect that. And then finally, my question, I'm looking at the 4502, the primary parcel. And it appears that 45th Street Southeast bisects that, does the Hope Covenant Church own that right of way? Was it vacated or is it still publicly owned?
As far as I know, it has been vacated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Finch. Any other commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Oh, yeah, this is Commissioner Hallen. I just have a, I just have a quick question. Given, you know, I'm kind of curious, like the intent, what is the vision, you know, what are they seeking to have built in this space in the multifamily density? And, you know, given the fact that they are, you know, I would say reducing deteriorated housing stock, but it still is affordable housing stock, you know, is there any vision in the application for, you know, the development of the space that would include taking advantage of tax credits that come from providing affordable housing in that, in that development site? Or is that too far down the line to even speak to?
So currently at this time, we don't, we're still evaluating the plan for that. We don't have a plan as far as what's going to go in there, what type of housing or what income. We would not be able to do that on our own if this would be a for-sale parcel or partnership that we're looking at. But we're still evaluating those proposals at this time.
Thank you very much.
Any other commissioners with questions?
Yeah, Chair Yanisak, this is Commissioner Holland.
Go ahead.
I was hoping staff, I was hoping staff maybe could weigh on on Commissioner Finch's question because there is a parcel that has a small, single-family home on it that's adjacent to this, it's on the lower level. So it's, you know, the same, anyway, same elevation and not up the hill where that buffer hill is, it's being left out of this proposed redesignation. And so I guess the question for staff would be, was that property owner contacted? It's kind of a triangular looking piece. And anyways, it would be kind of out of place if this proposal was supposed to, would move forward.
That, that property owner was not interested in joining in. I think they essentially want to keep living there as is. So I would suggest that we're not, we're not in a position to require that somebody be included with this annexation. There's, or the amendment, rather. So they weren't interested in rezoning their property at this time. They could in future, the future, decide that they perhaps would like to sell whoever eventually acquires this property and is looking at a redevelopment plan, may, may come up with an offer. And then they would have to rezone that parcel. But at this time, the property owner was not interested.
Karen, can you please move back to the site plan so everyone can understand the parcels that are being talked about here? Thank you.
Let's see, I don't know if I can point. Can you see my arrow here? I believe we're talking about this parcel right here.
That's correct.
That has, that has an existing single-family home on it.
Karen, did you have some additional information to present, or are you finished as well?
I've completed my presentation, other than to direct the commission's attention after you've heard from public comments that there is a draft resolution number 20-1 in your packet regarding this proposal.
Okay. Are there any commissioners have questions, additional questions for Karen, for staff?
You have a question?
Chair Yanisak, this is Commissioner Holland. I'm going to have additional questions for staff, but I was hoping maybe we could hear from the public prior to that.
Great.
Any other commissioners have questions for staff at this time? Okay, why don't we go ahead and then open it up for additional public comment? If there's anyone on the line who is wishing to speak to this item on the agenda tonight. Kathy will call out, I think that's how we're going to do it. We're going to call out the last four digits of phone numbers. And if your number is called and you are wishing to speak, that'd be your opportunity to unmute your phone and go ahead and introduce yourself with your name and address and go ahead and make your, make your comment at that time. So Kathy, do you want to, can you run through the list?
Yeah, I'll just go down my list. If you have no comments, just put no comments. If you are making comments on this matter, please give us your name and address for the record. The first one on the list is Ian Windham. Next, Linda Grant.
No comment on this one.
Thank you. Bill Wales. Raven Campbell.
No comment.
Hello, this is Ian, this is Ian Windham.
Yes.
I'm on the phone. I'm sorry, this is the first time I've done something like this.
Did you have comments on this matter?
Yes, okay. My name is Ian Windham. I own the property directly south of the Hope Covenant Church. At, my address is 1308 Maryland Avenue. And I'd like to be made clear on how this is going to impact the slope. On this map here, it's showing the boundary between my property and the Hope Covenant property. The red line does not look like what I believe is my property line because I've always believed that those huge maple trees belong to me. So I'm curious what's going to happen there. And I'm curious how this is going to affect my view to the north, having an eight-story, potential eight-story building. You know, I have a fabulous view from my property. And I would like to know who I can talk to for this. The view and the border marking on this map is alarming.
Okay, thank you, Ian.
Okay, let me, let me mute and I'm listening on my computer.
Okay. So guest at extension 7600.
No comment.
Guest at 3714.
This is Linda Erickson, and I live at 1503 45th Street Southeast. And first off, I did email Karen my comments because I adamantly oppose this for the simple reason is the traffic, okay, Rucker right now has a strip mall, it has the Totem Restaurant, and it has the Schmidt Clinic there. How are we going to take, and then the YMCA is at the end. So there is going to be a traffic problem on that street because it's only a two-lane street. So I was wondering, is the parking going to be on the west or the east side of Rucker? And how many units are there going to be? Are they going to be low-income? And if they are low-income, we're already, and my understanding is, you're already going to build low-income apartments where the old Kmart building is on Broad, and then there's also low-income apartments on Broadway. And currently, from on Hoyt, because I live on Hoyt, 45th and Hoyt, on Hoyt, from 41st Street to 45th Street, there are 12 apartment buildings. Four of them are low-income, there's eight businesses, and then there's the YMCA. So I would like to know what the plans are and if we can see those. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller was 0110.
No comment.
Next guest, Tina Hokinson.
Oh, that's wild.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No comment.
Next guest, Laura Gurley.
No comment. Thank you, Karen.
Next guest, Angela.
No comment at this time. Thank you.
And last extension I have is 6687. That's all the guests that I have.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Let me go back then. I know Commissioner Holland indicated that he might have some, some additional questions after we receive more public comment. So Commissioner Holland or anybody else, any other commissioners want to raise additional questions at this time?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Yanisak. I'd like to hear, know if there's any more additional public comments and then maybe we could close the public testimony and then, you know, have our planning commission dialogue with staff. Because, yeah, I do have several questions, but I didn't, I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to talk before I basically.
Okay.
My thoughts.
Let's do that then. So it sounds like we went through the list of everybody, appreciate the comments that we did get. Is there anybody else that we, at this time, who's on the line who, for whatever reason, wasn't fast enough to respond or had additional comment that they didn't get to make?
This is Tina Hokinson, 325 South Cabot. I do have one question about traffic. If a multi-unit housing is planned for that little area where the church is, adding any additional access to Evergreen Way would be a problem, I think, in that area. And the road to the, on the east side joins Evergreen Way at a skewed angle, which makes it difficult to access Evergreen Way from that intersection. So those would just be comments for future development there. That's a very tricky traffic area for adding more vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, great. Well, appreciate everyone, everyone's patience as we work through this, this remote process on the phone like this. At this time then, let's go ahead and close the, the public meeting and go back to commissioners. So Commissioner Holland or anyone else who had additional questions or comments?
Yeah, well, I'll move it, we close the, the public hearing at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Who was that? Oh, Fisher Finch?
Mike.
Okay. So let's go ahead and have a vote. Kathy?
Yes. Commissioner McGinn. Commissioner Beck.
Yes.
Commissioner Zlinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Tizzo.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Labra.
Yes.
And Chair Yanisak.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Commissioners? Any additional?
Commissioner Holland. Yeah, this is Commissioner Holland. Thanks, Chair Yanisak. Quick question. I am going to have some additional comments. I have a, I'm curious to why these two applications aren't separated out. I know that they're contiguous to one another. They seem to be two separate proposals based on the land use that is being proposed before us. And I also just want to say that I do have a conflict because I'm family friends with the Schmitz, so I won't be able to, to vote on this particular item this evening. But I do have some strong opinions about the, the Hope Covenant Church portion of this application. And so I was hoping maybe staff could maybe answer why these were lumped in together, other than the fact that they're contiguous properties.
So this is Karen Stewart. I will start with what I know, but perhaps David Stahlheim or Ellen Giffen, who maybe had talked with the applicants before this was prepared. So the application, the official application had these properties listed together. My understanding was that they had been advised to submit the one application, maybe just for ease of processing. But they are talking about or requesting different comprehensive plan designations as well as different zoning. So we tried to, in our staff report, differentiate between the two, and hopefully that was not too confusing. Any other staff have something to add regarding why they were combined?
Yeah, this is David Stahlheim. And just, the Schmidt family contacted us the year before for the docket, but they hadn't, actually probably for about two years, and they hadn't gotten to the point of submitting an application. Their interest was in commercial development for the site. And my recollection was that when Hope Covenant Church first approached us, they were interested in the same zoning designation to be extended onto their property. And so that's why we talked about, I talked to Hope Covenant Church to talk with the Schmidt ownership group to combine things. But as we started looking at the application, there was worries about commercial uses extending further up onto the Hope Covenant Church, partly because of some of the comments that have already been made in that neighborhood about additional traffic on the, on the streets there because a lot of that traffic would not be on Evergreen Way, it would be on the main, on the backside of the property there, and that would impact the residential neighborhood. So that's a little bit of the history, and there's nothing that precludes them to be combined, I guess, in our, our docket process.
Commissioner Holland, do you have more follow-up?
Yeah, sure. If I have the floor, I'll go ahead and talk about.
Go ahead.
Again, as I stated, I won't be voting on this item tonight. But I echo some of the same concerns that the public has had related to traffic. Specifically, I don't think that we want a lot of multifamily traffic trying to get on the Evergreen Way if and when a future development application is submitted at this location. I realize at this time, it's a non-project action and just a redesignation, but they have already indicated that their hopes is to sell and redevelop for multifamily. I also have concerns about solar access for the properties across Rucker Avenue to the east. And we put in some large multifamily development there. I think that they would, and then the other gentleman that talked about losing his views, I know that we don't have, the City of Everett doesn't have a view protection ordinance, but again, those are similar things that I would have concerns about. There would be a lot of traffic generated from this type of development. I don't see any, I guess, opportunity for walking to the buses to go down to 41st and cross at that location. But there are some other pedestrian types of concerns that I would have for a, a large multifamily development at the location that it is. We've got a lot of, I mean, I can see that there's signs posted up around the city quite a bit saying no mid-block crossing just because of those, those concerns. So those, and that and that other parcel not being included, it just seems like an out parcel that, and I realize that the city doesn't, and they didn't want to be included in it, but it just seems to make sense that if there were going to be a designation change, that, that parcel should be included because it's. because it's on the down slope of that. As you head up Maryland there, it gets pretty steep. So anyways, those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with questions or comments?
This is Commissioner Lark.
Go ahead.
Just a few thoughts, you know, as I look at it. I mean, it is on a, it is on a high-capacity road. It does have accessibility to transit. And I would really hope and encourage that the, that the, that the developers look into that to mitigate these, any sort of traffic concerns. Pushing people into more pedestrianized modes of mobility would be a good thing to do. But like, you know, I think the broader question is, like, you know, I believe that this city needs to make space for housing, the space for growth. Over the last decade, you know, we lost 10% of economic growth because of the housing costs that we had that constrained, you know, constrained people moving into places where there's economic opportunity. And to support economic growth in the city, we need more people. One of the challenges that we have is that, you know, probably in the coming decade or so, the American, the average American will have less disposable income. And to make sure that we have a thriving downtown, we need to have, you know, more people in our city supporting it. On top of it, we need to work to cultivate a thick labor market here in this city if we want to start landing large-scale businesses. Making space for housing, making space for people, making room for new neighbors is important and a priority. I would also encourage the, encourage, you know, any future developer really engage in dialogue with the neighborhood to make sure that it is, what is built there is a complement and a value add. And requires, takes an input. But I think, you know, you, if not here along the highest, you know, high-capacity corridor with transit that is within a walkable distance, you know, where else can we expect to result? The city is full. And so we need to be thoughtful. You know, there's no undeveloped land. We need to be thoughtful in our way of approaching this. And I think, you know, this is a space where you can, where you have room for doing that, where it meets goals that I think are needed for the city's growth and for the success of people in downtowns. And so to me, this makes a lot of sense. And while I recognize concerns articulated out there, I think they are not, they are concerns that won't be mitigated through, you know, a good design process.
Thank you Commissioner Lark. Any other commissioners with questions or comments?
This is Commissioner Beck. I just have one comment. So this particular area actually has pretty intense traffic up by Forty First and Rucker, where Rucker becomes Evergreen. And I kind of, I'm with some of the residents there in terms of concerns about traffic. And it's, I know that this is not a project, but I think a traffic study is in order in terms of concentration in this area. It really gets backed up at various points in the day. And so I think that would be a lot of traffic potentially putting on this road, the diagonal road. So I have reservations about this one because I just don't know enough about the traffic. And that's my only comment.
So this is David Stahlheim. And just in your packet, there is a preliminary traffic report from Gibson Consultants.
Thanks David. I didn't see that. I'm looking at the. Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments?
Chair Yanisak, this is Michael Finch. I had a few other comments and questions.
Please, please. Thank you.
So I really do appreciate the public comment on this. I recognize this is a challenging format in which to comment and follow any meeting. And so thanks for sticking in there. I do think that the context of this site does lend itself to a potential rezone. But I think in light of the public comments, as well as any other speculations, it would be a lot easier to evaluate the site in the context of a project. Without a project-specific request or a development agreement, I think it's difficult to really address the public concerns that have been voiced. I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Lark as to the availability of development land in the city. There is, there is a lot of land that is not developed to highest and best use, but has been rezoned to accommodate dense multifamily closer to the downtown core. So it's not a matter of opening up land for redevelopment to accommodate additional density. It's a matter of context and how that new development might fit into the existing fabric around it. And so that, for me, is my largest concern is without a specific project in mind to evaluate, it's difficult to really answer the questions that have been raised. And so I appreciate the silence of the applicant in the face of those comments. In looking at the specific resolution, there are a couple of points made on page two that I just, I don't really understand. Point number five says the proposed rezone mitigates any adverse impacts upon existing or anticipated land uses in the immediate vicinity. I don't know that where I sit today, I could actually say that truthfully. I think the other point that's raised in the resolution is that the proposed map amendments promote the best long-term interest of the Everett community by allowing future multifamily residential infill adjacent to mass transit. Adjacent might be too strong of a word, and I can think of other sites and locations that I would prefer to see development occur first. So I guess that if we do move forward the resolution, I would request those voting members to consider modifying the language of the resolution.
Thank you. Any other question or comments, Commissioner Finch? Any, anyone else?
Yes, this is Commissioner Zalinski. And I would just like to ask staff, if this rezone were to be approved, what opportunities would exist going forward for either planning commission or neighborhood input into the specific layout and design of the site? Because it is an awkward site and how it's laid out will have, go a long way to deciding what kind of impact it has on the neighborhood.
So Karen Stewart, I'll start responding and if other staff have something to add, please feel free. The gentleman, for example, who is talking about to the south of the site, and he was talking about the ravine and the big leaf maples in that area. So the parcel boundaries are drawn including those areas. However, the ravine would be a critical area and so there would be a setback from the edge of the ravine. So not all of the parcels are developable and the trees in the ravine would be preserved and presumably many of the trees would not be cut down, would not be allowed to be cut down. Now in terms of a future development proposal, that would prompt, depending on what the proposal is, whether or not it's a staff review process, that we would take something to our hearing examiner with a public hearing. Certainly, the application would, neighbors would be notified of what was being proposed. And oftentimes, staff recommends to the applicant that they should meet with the neighborhood in a meeting prior to submitting their plans to try to work out compatibility issues related to the height potential and the applicant, in addition to the trip generation report from Gibson that was included in your packet. There's also building envelope drawings that were included relating to the topography of the site and future heights and stair stepping that would be required. So there would be, obviously, design review would be done by staff with potentially the hearing examiner also being involved. I'll pause there, see if there's additional staff who want to help answer the question. And I guess I could add on regarding traffic and what improvements would need to be made at the intersection, depending on the number of trips that would be added. That would all be subject to a thorough review involving our traffic engineers to make sure that it would be meeting the required level of service and site distance considerations. And because of the topography, it's an elevated site, there would not be access directly onto Evergreen Way. So looking at Rucker would be a key consideration. And just the usage with the YMCA located to the south, all of that would have to be evaluated in a future, when an application was submitted with the future project review.
Commissioner Zalinski, did you have a follow-up?
No, that was a good answer. Thank you.
Any other commissioners or with comments or questions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Holland.
Go ahead.
So I know that Commissioner Beck mentioned about a TIA. So just reviewing what's in the packet there, there wasn't any intersection analysis done or anything else like that for a full development package or anything like that. But they did mention that it would generate 712 average daily trips and 58 PM peak hour trips. And they did not give AM trips, but I think that's an important one that would need to be analyzed as well, just based on location and where the major employment centers are. So, and again, as Commissioner Finch mentioned, without having an actual, you know, comprehensive plan, map and concurrent rezone tied to a project, it's really difficult to know what those impacts are with those trips, especially if, you know, they truly don't get a ride in, ride out on Evergreen Way and everything's funneled onto Rucker. That's 712 new trips that are going to be snaking through that neighborhood, which I think is a tremendous impact on that, in that single-family neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
I'll just make one quick comment too, because I was looking at the traffic report. I don't think the Frontier Building, which is the office building that's over in this area, is near capacity right now either. I mean, so there's already significant amounts of traffic and there's already, and there's vacancies over in the area. So I know this is a preliminary traffic report, but it doesn't really give a detailed analysis. And again, I understand that this can't happen without a project, but it's just difficult because it's a little bit of a mess right now. So again, those are my thoughts. We already have some structures in the area that are not even close to capacity and the traffic is already a pretty significant issue.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? I'm Commissioner Yanisak. I do have a couple of questions for, and hopefully Karen, you can answer these. Am I correct? Did I understand that these are, these properties are currently zoned R1 residential?
That's correct.
How did we end up with a commercial, with a professional building and a church on R1 parcel?
So I guess I didn't, I'm not sure what the zoning is. Like the Totem Restaurant, which is the triangular parcel to the north, and then the next parcel, which is the commercial building, presumably it's zoned commercial. I haven't done research on those two. They were outside of the proposed area. But they're obviously developed as a commercial, as commercial uses now and have, the Totem Restaurant has been there a very long time. The Professional Services Building owned by the Schmitz is more recent, maybe within the last eight to 10 years it was constructed.
Do you know how long the church has been there?
Maybe 20, 25 years. A long time.
Okay. And I guess what, one question I have is I'm looking at these, this property here, and I appreciate that some of the issues have been raised by the neighbors and other commissioners here. I'm wondering, I mean, if we did nothing, this piece of property here, it sounds like the church is potentially gonna, wants to sell, or I'm assuming that means they're no longer meeting there, using it as a church facility. It would seem to me that there's pretty much the only person who would buy that would be someone who either wants a church or potentially to build a single-family residence, although I'm wondering how likely it would ever be that, given that location, letting up to Evergreen Way like that, how likely that would ever be usable as a single-family? I don't know. Did staff, Karen, do you have any thoughts on, given that location there, what types of other uses could, currently, could this property could ever be used for?
Well, I mean, the R1 zoning has a whole list of uses, but it's basically the low-density residential. And I'm not sure, with the church being there, obviously it can continue as a church. I didn't personally meet with the applicants, as David Stahlheim, it sounds like he's talked with them before. So I'm not sure if they were exploring some type of commercial use, was what I heard initially. But I'm sorry, I really don't have any more information. Perhaps the applicant's representative, Brian, with Inside Engineering, maybe has further background. I don't have any further information about that.
Okay. And I guess one other question. So with, if this rezone happened and it was approved for multifamily, what would normally be the height limit on something like that?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
But I guess.
I was going to say seven stories, but I could be wrong. I don't have a height map right in front of me.
And I guess what I'm ultimately wondering is, given it, given that it would butt up to residential properties on at least two sides, I assume that that would limit, there would be some limits on the height, given the required setbacks and the size of the parcel. I can't quite get a sense for that though. I guess I'm wondering, would, even if that is the maximum height, would it ever be achievable on that property in any event?
Maybe for the portion. Perhaps for the portions that are adjacent to Evergreen Way. So the most westerly portion perhaps, and then it could step down to, as it had, as the development. And obviously they'll have to have parking too. So there could be more of the parking lot on the east side of the parcel. But again, this is all speculation because there's no development proposal before us.
Karen, if you could close out your screen and I'm going to share part of the application screen for a sec?
I will if I can figure out how to do that.
Just hit the little X box.
I don't have.
Oh, in the, in the share box. Go to your share box and.
I don't. My share box is not displayed. I'm in the slideshow view. I don't know how to get my share box, my, I'm sorry, I don't know how to do that.
Okay, I'm going to request control right now. So just let me take control.
Okay. I see that. That popped up. I'm allowing that. I'm allowing that.
If I may.
PIPA, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Please go to the Teams app. So you can ignore your presentation and press escape right now and then go to.
Okay, somebody else is driving here.
Go ahead, David, you got it.
Yeah, so I got, so this is in the record in front of folks to try to answer Cherry Yanisak's questions about the height. So the current code, I'm gonna go to the code, which says that you can go up to 80 feet, but then there's a footnote that talks about that distance of how tall a building can be within proximity of the single family zones. Can only be 28 feet when within 50 feet of the single family zones or R2. And so this drawing that the applicant submitted as part of this, here's Rucker Avenue, here's Evergreen Way, you start seeing what that potential building envelope could be in these areas compared to the existing church. And so that's just a large massing diagram there, not a design drawing clearly, but anyhow, that gives you a sense of what the basic framework of the code allows.
Thank you. That's helpful. I guess I did have one other question then. I appreciate concerns too about potential traffic impacts, but I would think that if there was a specific proposal made, that'd certainly be something that would need to be addressed. I guess my question is, are, how common is it for project applications to be denied due to not being able to either satisfy the, you know, traffic concerns or I guess make necessary improvements to that? Is that a basis that projects could be limited or denied application? Or is that a matter of the hearing officer usually?
Yeah, so this is David Stahlheim again. So projects quite often are not, I wouldn't say denied, but if they cannot meet the engineering requirements and the concurrency requirements through mitigation, then they're, they don't go forward. Usually a project will either get scaled back where the number of units and the traffic generated will be changed, or there'll be improvements to intersections and turning movements and lights and, you know, whatever else is necessary in order to meet the city's engineers' requirements for access for that. So those are all adopted standards and so the development project goes through that process and it has to meet the city's development standards before it's approved.
Thank you. And I guess what I'm getting at is I wonder if the topography and just the size and the location of these concerns raised would just in and of itself naturally create some limits to how the property could be redeveloped if this zoning application were to be approved today. So Commissioner Finch, did you have some additional comments or questions?
No, no additional comments. I guess the questions I had about what number five and number six and seven in the proposed resolution mean were not answered. I'm curious to know if staff wanted to explain what is meant by those.
Okay, Karen Stewart. So this is a draft resolution. Obviously you need to modify it as you see fit. These were, this is standard language, five, six, and seven with these types of applications. I believe that six and seven, that this wording might be in our code of needing to make these types of determinations. Number five, in terms of adverse impacts that would relate, because it's a non-project action, just changing the zoning on the map, but then trying to anticipate what some of the future adverse impacts would be, such as shading due to height. So that, there would be a CIPA review, that would be a State Environmental Policy Act review on any proposed application. And so adverse impacts would have to be mitigated below the level of significance. So that would relate to number five. I would hesitate, so number five potentially does not need to be included in your resolution, but I would hesitate to advise you that six and seven are optional, because I've seen that standard wording in all the rezone decisions that I have reviewed. So I would advise to keep six and seven in and make some sort of adjustments to the wording if it's more editing, but that the spirit and the sort of, that's captured in six and seven should be part of your discussion and your consideration should you choose to approve some version of the proposals.
Any other commissioners with questions or comments? Okay. I guess any additional staff comments before I return to the resolution?
Not for me. I'm trying to think if I answered the citizen comment questions. We talked about traffic.
Karen, let me just confirm, you would be the staff contact for public if they wanted to contact the planning department with questions about this after the meeting.
My role right now is evaluating the subject of this resolution. So the docket request, which is the Conference of Plan Land Use map changes and zoning changes. I don't have, and I probably would not be the planner assigned to review a multifamily proposal on this site. That would be somebody else probably. So.
But as for questions potentially about the application, I know that was one of the questions that one of the public commenters asked.
A future application?
No, I'm talking about for this application. So I guess I would just say if there's someone from public would, to answer that question, just they could call the planning department and just ask the question.
Okay, yes.
Okay. So planning commissioners, we do have this Resolution 20-1 in front of us tonight. I don't know if there's any, anybody wanted to make a motion or have any thoughts about wanting to move that forward in this, in current form or in some different form?
Cherry Yanisak, this is Michael Finch again. One question for you. In looking at, having driven the sites, looking at the map, looking at the adjacent uses, I guess, not that I'm voting tonight, because I think that we're all here and so therefore I'm not needed to vote, but I guess it would be easy for me to approve or rezone of the commercial mixed-use site at the north of this assemblage. I think there are significantly more questions surrounding the proposed change to multifamily to the south. And so is it possible to break up this proposal into the two components that reflect the different land uses, or is the commission required to go forward and evaluate the proposal in front of them?
I would defer that question to staff.
I'm not sure. David Stahlheim, do you have an opinion on that?
Let's see if our planning director wants to weigh in on this.
Okay, yes, this is Alan Giffen, planning director. The commission does have the discretion to decide how to act on this particular application, even though that's a single application, but with different ownerships. You have the discretion to recommend approval of a part of it, or all of it, or none of it. And so that's fair game for your discussion. You can make a recommendation that you feel is in the best interest of the community for the property there.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Finch?
It does. It does answer my question and.
I guess I'm not sure. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I'm not sure it provides a clear path moving forward, though.
Agreed. Again, I'm an alternate and I don't believe I'm voting this evening, so it would be somewhat awkward for me to make a recommendation that we bifurcate these parcels or the resolution. But it's just clear to me that the, I believe it's the Schmidt-owned parcels to the north, given the adjacency to the north and south of the parcels in question, that's an easier question than the multifamily rezone.
And I guess I would just say that I agree with that as well. I guess I would just say, Beck, is it, for whatever reason, the parties did join in presenting a single application, at the very least, I would, I would think that it would be appropriate for us as a commission, if we did want to bifurcate this and that we at least provide some additional guidance or make some sort of comment to perhaps the remaining applicant about what we would think would be the next step forward or, I guess, provide some additional, I guess, maybe present some additional plan for moving forward with the remaining part of it, if that was even something that we did. I think that would be helpful to everybody. Go ahead, yes.
Alan Giffen, planning director. It's not your job to advise the applicant how to proceed with some alternative plan. You're free to give them advice if you wish, but you don't, you don't have to. However, if you are going to, for example, make a recommendation to the city council to approve a portion of the rezone and comp plan amendment, but not the other, then you should be backing that with findings of the reasons why you would not support rezoning or changing the comp plan on another portion of the site.
So is there any commissioner who has, I guess, any other question or comments or a motion or something to move forward?
This is Commissioner Zelinski. I'll take a shot at a motion. This is a very difficult site, as we have all gathered in our deliberations. I don't think the R1 makes much sense for property that butts up against a high-capacity transit corridor. On the other hand, I have a lot of sympathy for the concerns expressed by some of the residents about the traffic impacts of a high-density multifamily. So unfortunately, we have to make a decision on this one and I'm persuaded by the comments that Commissioner Lark made, as well as the overall constraints of the site. And so therefore I'm going to move that we approve the recommended comp plan amendment and rezone as proposed, but with the resolution modified to delete that sentence five on page two, because frankly, I don't buy it. And I thought of maybe modifying it, but I think the best bet would be to simply delete it. So that is my motion, to approve the resolution with the elimination of that sentence five.
Thank you, Commissioner Zelinski. We have a second for the motion.
Five seconds. This is Commissioner McGinn.
With that, let's go ahead and move to a vote. Kathy, can you call through?
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
No.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tezdo?
No.
Commissioner Holland?
Again, I must abstain because I'm a family friend of the Schmitz.
Commissioner Labra?
Oh goodness. Yes.
Cherry Yanisak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everyone who commented. We are ready to move on to item number two, I believe, on the agenda.
That's correct.
And I believe, is that Karen again?
Yes, it is. Okay, so this is a second private property docket proposal, and this is the Evergreen Recovery Center Summit Campus. And this is approximately 1.22 acres.
Karen, sorry to interrupt, but you need to share your screen again.
So I think I'm gonna have to close out because I don't have, unless PIPA or somebody can help me, I don't have the, because I'm in the slideshow, so I assume I need to end the show and queue it all up again in order to get the prompt that allows me to share my screen. Is that correct?
Can you press all tab and it shows you all the software that you have on?
Okay, yes, that worked.
Go to Teams and share it that way. Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that. I am learning as I'm going here. Okay, so does everybody see my screen now?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Evergreen Recovery Center Summit Campus, up in North Everett, north of Everett Avenue. So this is a proposed expansion of the Evergreen Recovery Center. Existing uses on a portion of the 1.22 acres is a multifamily housing and treatment center with a parking lot, and then single-family homes are in the parcels to the west. The proposed uses, and they would be subject to a future development agreement between the city and the applicant, would be to expand the summit campus to the west with two new multifamily buildings, offering integrated therapeutic daycare, with each building serving up to 16 mothers and their children for up to a six-month stay. Here's a map that illustrates the existing summit campus is on the Easterly Parcel, so the east subject properties labeled on the map there. And then the single-family homes across the street to the west are owned by Evergreen Recovery Center and are proposed to be part of this action. Here's an aerial photo of the existing facility here, and then Summit Avenue, this is I-5 here, and the sound wall, and then single-family homes here. The request is to amend the Conference of Plan Map from single-family to commercial mixed-use and to rezone, change the zoning from R2 to single-family detached medium density, from, excuse me, from R2, single-family detached medium density, to C1, general commercial. And this would allow expansion of the existing facility. So here's the proposed Conference of Plan changes in context. So here's the proposed comprehensive plan changes in context, so that you can see where commercial uses are to the south of the site, on either side of Everett Avenue. And then to the east is single-family, to the north is single-family. However, north of 26th Avenue is an existing church, which is somewhat interesting compared to the last one, where it's a church that's R1-zoned also. And then the corresponding request for the zoning amendment to allow expansion of the facility would be to go from single-family detached medium density to general commercial. Staff prepared a staff report addressing the merits of the requests, and it notes that there's also a, as required, rezone narrative. And in the narrative, the applicant explains about how this will facilitate and allow expansion of the social service. And this is a facility that has been in that area on Summit Street for decades. The logical boundaries are proposed, as we saw on the earlier map. And then looking at the, this block area of Summit Avenue, it generally has more characteristics of commercial mixed use than single-family, because of the existing facility there and commercial to the south and the large church to the north. The applicant intends to limit commercial uses to residential and institutional uses through a future development agreement with the city to ensure neighborhood compatibility. Public comments have come in since the staff report was prepared, and there have been three emails supporting this proposed amendment, as well as supporting the existing facility and noting that it's a good neighbor with, with the neighborhood in the area. So staff recommends approval of these proposed map changes, and as you did with the prior docket request, this is subject to a public hearing. So I'll turn it back to you, Terri Anisak.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and open the public meeting. And perhaps first, we can see if, well, I guess, first of all, do we have any planning commission, commissioner questions for, for Karen?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Lark. First of all, can you guys hear me okay? My internet was a little choppy earlier, and I want to make sure I'm coming through clear. So thumbs up.
We hear you.
Fantastic.
We hear you.
Good. So I'm kind of curious, like, what kind of public outreach and community engagement was done by the, by the agency leading up to this? You know, in previous conversations we had, we've talked about this, and we've also talked about the perils of, like, statutorily articulating what we expect. And so one thing I'd be really interested in doing is starting to hear what best practices are, or what's, or, you know, what agencies have done for projects, for things like this. And so it could, do they speak to that at all? I don't see anything initially in the, the application, or are they here to speak to that, if I may?
I'm not sure who's on the line. Certainly, the applicant has representatives, and they're aware of the meeting tonight, so they may be on the line. I'm not sure.
Maybe if, this would be opportunity, if someone is on the line from Evergreen or, or one of their representatives?
It looks like Linda Grant.
Ms. Grant, is she on the line?
Yes. Yes, I am muted. Can you hear?
Yeah, go, go ahead. We can hear you. Yes, thank you. Did you, did you hear the question?
I'm the CEO at Evergreen Recovery Centers, and our organization has notified the neighborhood, and we actually were scheduled to be on the Neighborhood Association Agenda back in, I believe it was March, but because of COVID, or maybe it was February, at any rate, that meeting had to be canceled, and so we didn't get to meet personally. I also have met with the county councilmen from that district. Is that the question you're asking about the kind of outreach we've done?
Well, I, I think that's... Actually, no, you're, you're referring to the, the kind of outreach that I was, that I was asking about. So, you know, I just wanted to confirm, you've reached out to city council people for the, in the district, or you said county council, right? And then you've also reached out to the Neighborhood Association, and do you, did you have any, just with regards, was there any sort of engagement or dialogue with bringing them into any sort of component of the design process? For me, I, I'm a huge fan of the Pomegranate Centers method.
We, we had some casual conversation about that, and our intention is to include that. We have apartment-building-looking buildings there. So we have tried to honor the nature of the community we're in and would continue to do that. And one of the major goals of our expansion is to build a bigger daycare, so that we can have more children on-site with their mothers instead of 12, which is what we're limited to right now. So that goes with it, some play areas and some, some common, more parky areas, and we're up against the freeway, so that provides us with good sound control. It actually doesn't carry sound as much back toward the freeway. So we're, we would be sensitive to that anyway, but we absolutely intend to include them. We've worked with the neighbors for many years and often are recipients of their Christmas baskets and things. There, we have a great relationship.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that input. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments or questions? Ms. Grant, since we do have you on the line, did you have anything you wanted to add to the presentation?
Well, I don't need to jump ahead of the staff. They did a beautiful job of summarizing this, and it's a complex situation. We have been on the campus area since 1972 and providing residential treatment as well as detox. This year, we changed our detox, and we only have the moms and children there. So it's a completely family-oriented environment. And one of the things the neighbors often say is they really like seeing our moms and their babies taking their strollers and going for a walk each day. And these mothers are with us for about six months and completing a program that sort of reinforces their parenting and prepares them for going out in the world, getting employment, permanent housing. And they're mostly local girls. They live in the area. We serve some from North Sound, but the primary group of them comes from the Snohomish County area. I could say more, but you probably don't need, I don't want to overstate for you.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess at this time, then, if there's anybody from the public who wanted to address the commission, I'll have Kathy call through and give you that opportunity.
Okay. Remember to unmute yourself if you're using the app, or Start6 if you're using your phones. First guest is Casey Glennis. Next guest, Don Bushneck.
I'm with the applicant, and I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Next guest, Ismael Mohammed. Next guest, Laura Gurley. Next guest, Tina Hoconston.
Sounds like a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Extension 7600. Extension 0110.
I'm with the applicant. I have no comment.
Thank you. Extension 2394.
Yes, this is Susan Seacor. I'm a neighbor a few blocks over on East Grand. And in reviewing the application, there seems to be a request for rezoning based on a development agreement. However, that includes restrictions. That agreement hasn't been formed, and what the applicant says is, you know, that uses are limited to the things that we expect with this project. And it says, including but not limited to those things, multifamily housing, supportive housing, daycare, and social services. To say, including but not limited to, would seem to leave the door wide open to any number of other things that they might do with a, a C1, a change to a C1 zoning. That, that would seem quite unacceptable, I would think.
Thank you, Susan. Next, extension 7187. That ends our guest list.
Okay, thank you. Any additional question or comments from the commissioners at this time?
Terri Anisak, this is Michael Finch.
Go ahead.
So a question about the, the patrons for ERC post-expansion. Approximately what percentage or expected percentage will be from Everett as opposed to broader Snohomish County?
Well, sometimes they're from broader Snohomish County, but they end up settling in Everett. So I would say that it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 50% to 60% that are Everett residents to begin with.
Great. Thank, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Any other commissioners?
This is Commissioner Labra.
Go ahead.
Oh, well, I was just going to say, I drove through the site, looked at the commercial development, which I'm somewhat familiar with on Everett Avenue, and the site looked very well-maintained, their current facility. It seems like a reasonable project for the area. That's my comment.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
If I may ask a quick question to the applicant. So like, like, my previous employer, Housing Hope, one of the challenges we encountered was that, you know, some of our, some of our funding mechanisms restricted our capacity, like, restricted our discretion on, like, who we admit from what geographic areas. Do those similar funding restrictions also apply to some of the, some of the grants that fund and support your organizations?
See, at this point in time, all of the women are funded under Medicaid treatment under the Medicaid Health Care Plan, and we contract with the health care plans for the North Sound region. So that's pretty much our, 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 our area that we draw from. And there are treatment centers in Eastern Washington just like this, and they stay over there, and there are treatment centers in the south part of the state that serve this population. So that's why it tends to be local. And then often, they have children and family nearby that is really helpful to have them stay connected to or develop closer repair relationships, shall we say? And so the, the pregnant and parenting mothers tend to stay in the area that they came from.
Roger that. Thank you so much for that insight.
Any other commissioners with questions or comments?
Terri Anisak, this is Michael Finch again. Yes, I'm not voting tonight, but I, I have driven the site and the vicinity. And in reviewing the proposed project and rezone, you know, given the context of this site, I think that the proposal is a good one. My only comment would be that in the draft resolution, item number six on page two, it notes that the proposed map amendments promote the best launch interests of the Everett community. And I think that while that is true, I also think it's worth recognizing that this is a regional facility. It appears to be well-run, well-maintained, and a service to the region, the county at a minimum. And I think at some point, we need to recognize that Everett as a city has taken on a significant portion of the, the county services that other cities choose not to take on. So while I am supportive of this rezone, I do think we should acknowledge the place that, that Everett as a city is taking relative to meeting the regional demands.
Thank you. Any other commissioners' questions or comments? Anything additional?
This is Commissioner Holland. Just if there's no additional public testimony, I would make the recommendation to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Beck?
That was Commissioner Beck. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Let's go ahead and go, go to a vote, then. Kathy, vote to close.
Motion to close. Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisto?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Terri Anisak?
Yes. Okay. With that, any additional commissioner comments, questions, or motions?
This is Commissioner Beck. I actually would like to go ahead and move, recommending a resolution, recommending the city council amend the comprehensive plan, land use designation, and zoning at 2601, 2604, 2606, 2612, 2614, Summit Avenue, as part of the annual docket for 2020.
Okay. And I believe that would be Commission Resolution 2002.
Correct.
As proposed. Okay. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Holland will second that.
Commissioner Holland seconds. Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to a vote. Kathy, can you call through again?
Yeah. Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisto?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland? Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Terri Anisak?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everybody. That would conclude agenda item number two. We have, the next item is our floodplain management. Is that Steve?
Yes, that's me.
All right. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I have a PowerPoint point to share here. So I'm Steve Inglesby. I'm with the planning department. I'll give you a little bit of background about the National Flood Insurance Program.
Hey, Steve, could you just take a pause there? It looks like Karen's screen is still on. She needs to get up.
Oh. Okay. Can everybody see that? Am I on?
I can see you, but not.
We can't see your screen.
Can't see my screen. Hmm.
No, we see you.
All right, let's try it again. There. Is that working now?
There you go. Yes, thank you.
Great. All right, so Chapter 30 of Title 19, Regulations for Flood Damage Prevention. So, the city entered the National Flood Insurance Program in the 1970s. There are 52 policies for the landowners within Everett. And so far since the 70s, nine insurance claims have been paid for a total of $230,000. So, Chapter 30 regulates areas that are subject to periodic flooding. The aerial on the left is of the city. The areas in green are areas of flood. And the area in the blue is a floodway. So FEMA has issued a new flood insurance study and flood hazard maps. The flood hazard maps are called flood insurance rate maps, and they become effective on June 19th of this week. So, if the regulations that, the regulations do not comply with the National Flood Insurance Program requirements, property owners will not be eligible for flood insurance. So, last week, city council adopted the interim flood damage prevention ordinance on June 10th. This ordinance that they adopted replaces the Chapter 30 that was titled Flood Plain Overlay Districts and Regulations, and they were established in 2005. So, the 2005 regulations no longer complied with the requirements of FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program, and that is why we have done the updates. So, key changes from the 2005 regulations are as follows. I should back up and say that we are adopting or kind of duplicating, I should say, the state, the 2019 State Model Ordinance. So, the changes, key changes are the overlay zoning districts that we currently have for a few more days, the floodway, urban flood fringe, and rural flood fringe districts. Their descriptions and permitted uses will be removed. The reasons for that is that those areas are described with, within the FEMA's flood insurance rate maps, and so there's no reason to duplicate there. Definitions, we will be duplicating the National Flood Insurance Program definitions. So, it's just really an update for the definitions. Let's see, the lowest floor for residential and non-residential buildings are required to be elevated to one foot above the base flood elevation rather than our current regulations which require two feet. This would match what the State Model Ordinance shows. The base flood elevation is the elevation to which floodwater is anticipated to rise during the base flood. And the base flood, or the hundred-year flood, is a flood that has a 1% chance of being equaled or exceeded in any given year. Also, other changes, the allowance to increase the water surface elevation of the base flood of one foot at any point in the community within the floodway will be replaced with a no-rise within the floodway. So, there should really no, there should not be any net fill allowed within the floodway. This is really a requirement that shouldn't have been allowed in the first place in our code. Another update is standards added for the DE zone. That's the coastal high hazard area, and that's along the coastline and accounts for storm surges and wave action. Another change is the applicable density fringe area regulations from Snohomish County will be adopted that will apply only to the density fringe area on the flood insurance rate maps. The density fringe applies to the Smith Island Estuary. So, the density fringe is just something that applies to the Snohomish River Basin that's not found in any other FEMA requirement. So, yeah, it just applies to these restoration areas here on the left, and there's no other density fringe in the city. And here's the firm panels. There's about 10 of these throughout the city. And these FEMA maps can be found on their website through this website here. They are currently pending until June 19th, then they'll be the official maps. Here's an example of the current maps and what's pending that'll be adopted in a couple days here. So, on the left is the pending maps, on the right is current. There's not a lot of changes. You'll see the floodway here and the diagonal lines, the Zone AE with the hundred-year floodplain elevation of approximately 12 feet, and the VE zones further south to the, yeah, further south to the west. And this information's found on these panel maps. So, the main changes to the flood maps are that the maps have been converted from the National Geodatic Vertical Datum, NGVD 29, to the North American Vertical Datum of 1988, the NABD 88. And the difference between those two elevations is approximately 3.64 feet. And so, converting, the conversions on the maps are about the same, rather than all the 3.64-foot difference, but there's, in some areas, a four-inch difference of a rise of the base flood elevation. So, last slide here. FEMA began another update to its maps after further analysis of the levees along the Snohomish River's lower basin. So, they have this note on their maps, for the maps, the panels along the Snohomish River that says more studies are needed for the existing levees. So, probably that's several years out before that happens. So, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Steve. Any commissioner comments or questions for Steve? Okay, hearing done. Let's, I will open the public hearing on this matter before the commission tonight. I don't know if we have anybody from the public who wanted to comment, but now is the time. Kathy, can you call through the, our guests?
Sure. Casey Glenniff? John Bushneck? Ismail Mohammed? Laura Gurley? Tina Hokinson?
No comments.
Thank you. And extension 7187. That ends the guest list tonight.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions or comments during the, for the public hearing?
This is Commissioner Holland. I would move that we close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Who made that motion?
I'm sorry, was that Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Okay. Motion second. Can we have a vote?
Who seconded?
Commissioner Lavra, I believe.
Who did the first motion?
Commissioner Holland moved to close.
That's what I thought. Thanks. Okay, vote. Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tito? Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Cherry Anasak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, Steve. That concludes Item Number Three. Our last item on the agenda here is rethink zoning, and I believe this date. I'm sorry?
Cherry Anasak, we still got it, we still have to, we have a resolution.
Oh, we have, we have a vote. Oh, I'm sorry. That's correct. That was a vote to close the public hearing. I apologize. So, the public hearing is closed. Any additional comments or questions from the, from the commission then? Any motions?
This is Commissioner Lavra. I move that we approve the resolution with one edit. I discussed this with Steve today. There was one, one area where just the numbering had been changed, and it was referring to numbering that had been changed. Other than that, I would move that we approve the resolution 20-03.
Do we have a second?
I'll second. Commissioner Zalinski?
Thank you.
Now, now we can move on to a vote. Thank you.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Tito?
Yes.
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavra?
Yes.
Cherry Anasak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and again, thank you, Steve. So, that concludes then Agenda Item Three. So, moving on to Item Number Four, rethink zoning, and I think is that Dave Tyler?
Yes, good evening. This is Dave Tyler, and I am here to discuss streets, sidewalks, pedestrian connections. First, hopefully Steve can stop sharing his screen so I can show our presentation here. Steve, are you able to close that down? There we go. So, just a minute here. There we go. So, this is a new chapter in the zoning code, although it's not all new material. And when we say streets, we're not talking about street standards or street improvement standards. We're talking about street designations. So, street improvements, that would be the domain of Public Works and Engineering. So, a quick overview, again, this is a new chapter. Our template for the chapter is existing metro standards. So, the metro standards include various streets which have a designation, and I'll get into those designations in just a minute. So, what we did was we took the metro standards and as best as we could, extended them out to apply citywide. I'll show you a map here in just a minute. Public sidewalks are part of this chapter. The basic standard for sidewalks is in Title 13. That's the streets title, and that determines when street improvements, and included in street improvements, sidewalks, when those are required. And then also in the chapter, there's a new section on pedestrian circulation and connections, and that would be sort of on the interior portion of a site or on private property, not within the public realm. So, here is map 33-1. This sort of serves as the basis for applying different development standards in not just the Chapter 33, but in other chapters of the code as well. So, as mentioned previously, these designations, the street designations would be applied to the city as a whole. You can see in the map here, the big cluster of color, that's metro. So, those are existing designated streets. And then this map, by incorporating the city, extends those designations to include some of the arterials down to the south as well as Broadway. What's harder to see here are there are some small green segments that are more scattered, and those coincide with some of the smaller pockets of neighborhood commercial zoning. And so, the idea there is to ensure that those little commercial nodes are walkable and accessible from the surrounding neighborhood. So, again, the standards apply mainly to arterial streets, but there are exceptions. And then the street designations are, basically are indicator that there are other land use and zoning standards that will apply. And the standards that are based on that include public sidewalk standards which would supersede the standards in Title 13, specifically with regard to sidewalk width. So, here is a blow-up of the area where we do have some new proposed street designations. And it's a little blurry, but you can see Evergreen Way is one of them, Everett Mall Way, 19th Avenue Southeast. So, those, those streets would have slightly different sidewalk and other development standards than they do today because of these designations. So, what are the standards that fall out of having a street designation? Number one, building design, so that would include from Chapter, I believe it's 12, weather protection transparency. So, as you go up the hierarchy in, in the different street designations with TOD streets being the most restrictive, there's greater amounts of weather protection and transparency required. So, you have a, you know, sort of a sliding scale based upon how restrictive of a street designation you have. Also, parking structure design in terms of how much of a structure can front on one of these designated streets varies depending upon the designation. Landscape requirements, you have a little bit different landscaping for some of the street designated streets, and that really is related to the location of landscaping and in particular, street trees. And then you have permitted uses which can be affected by a street designation. So, here's an example from Table 5-2. And our example is automobile fuel sales, and then across the top, you see different zoning designations, and I've only included commercial industrial zones here because auto fuel sales would not be permitted in any residential zone. So, you'll see the P indicates it's permitted. A is administrative use, and the number four is a special regulation, which you can see says that TOD streets or pedestrian streets, automobile fuel sales would not be permitted. So, if we go back to the designations map, TOD would be anything in purple. TOD would be anything in purple, pedestrian would be anything in red. So, between the purple and red designated streets, you would not have automobile fuel sales allowed. It would be allowed in the same zone, but off that street, where there is no similar street designation. And then, we also sort of provide a list of the different standards that are driven by street designations, and that's in Table thirty-three dash one. I did not include that here, because it's a full-page table, and we would start to lose resolution. But we think this is going to be a good tool for the public, and also for planners, because it'll basically inventory all the different standards that are affected by the street designations, and put them in one place. And then hopefully, once we get it into final format, all the different chapters and sections will be linked, so you can, so you can navigate out of this table to the different chapters and the standards. Public sidewalks, this is another table from the code, from the draft code, Table thirty-three dash two. And a lot of information here, but basically, you could see the, the column headers there, that's the frontage zone, pedestrian clear zone, landscape furniture zone, and those coincide with shaded areas in the image above, just to identify what the standards are for those particular areas. So, on the left, next to the building, the frontage zone, that's the area basically used for ingress egress into the building entrances. And then in the middle, the orange section, that's, that's the main walkway section, that's intended to be a clear zone, that does not have, you know, obstructions to block pedestrian travel. And then out by the street, you have your landscape furniture zone, that's where your street trees, streetlights, benches, your garbage cans, other furniture, bike racks, things like that would go there. And this is just kind of a schematic, every street's different. So not every, you know, every street's going to have sufficient right-of-way to put all this stuff. But these kind of active standards, but also as guidelines, in, in the event that there's not enough room, there are exceptions that are allowed to the, to the zone widths that you see here. So you can see the TOD street, on the second column over from the left, has a minimum width, sidewalk width of eight to ten feet, so that's the greatest standard. Then you go down from there, pedestrian streets, connector streets, and then as you get down into residential mixed use and undesignated streets, then we defer back to Title thirteen for, for sidewalk widths and other street improvements. Also, sidewalk treatments are a part of this as well. So, I think it's TOD streets, as well as pedestrian streets, would have a requirement to install various sidewalk treatments, whether it's, you know, unit pavers, or decorative clocks and other furniture. There's a menu essentially in the standards, and each development would have to pick two from the menu. Continuing with public sidewalks, one of the things that we're doing with these standards is making sure we don't eliminate the higher standards that are currently in the BMU chapter, and also the E1 chapter of the code. You have basically eight-foot sidewalks plus landscaping in those chapters. So, this is an example, this is a photo of the Community Health Center on Broadway, so it's BMU zoned. In the standard, there is for a, I believe it's a five-foot tree well with an eight-foot sidewalk. There may have been, you know, modification or deviation slightly, because it looks like the tree well to the building may be a little bit less in this case. But generally speaking, this meets the standard. Another example on Broadway, this is the Starbucks up on North Broadway, near the Community College. This is fairly recent, I worked on this one, oh, I think it was in twenty-fourteen, twenty-thirteen, something like that. So you can see the landscape area, furniture zone on the left, the pedestrian clear zone walkway, and then a frontage zone to the right. The frontage zone, you know, doesn't have specific improvement standards, so there may be, you know, a way to put landscaping, or pots, or benches, or other things in that area. And here's a good example of why we need standards. This is Evergreen Way, very pedestrian unfriendly, because of the narrowness of the sidewalk. You can see in the foreground here that it's on a slope, because the, it crosses a driveway. And so, if you can visualize this section of Evergreen with a, you know, a four-foot planter at the curb edge on the right, and then an eight-foot sidewalk, it would be six, between six and eight, that would make a world of difference. And so, that's the current E1 standard, and so we're proposing, through the street designations and the landscape standards, that, that the E1 requirements be retained with a higher sidewalk and landscaping standard. You can see there are some challenges here, too, though, and, and those really are going to have to be handled on a project-specific basis. You can see utility poles, lots of signal infrastructure, I think the signal poles out there. So, in many cases, sidewalk improvements are really going to have to work around some of those, so, some of those big structures, because they're probably not going to be moved. One other item I wanted to touch on, and that is pedestrian connections that are internal within a site. So we have a, a new section of the chapter, which would essentially require connections between building entrances and the public sidewalk, between buildings, or building entrances and parking, as well as to open space and between buildings. Another requirement, this is a new standard, this is a graphic we took right out of, out of the chapter, is for commercial settings, maintaining a clear six-foot pedestrian walkway between the building entrance and any parking. So a couple ways of accomplishing that, one is to put in a wheel stop in the parking area to prevent the bumper from the car from overhanging onto the sidewalk, and the other is to allow the bumper hang, overhang, but just require a wider sidewalk. And so in that case, that would be the example on the right here. You would end up with essentially an eight-and-a-half-foot wide sidewalk. So there's an example of what that looks like. This is an existing shopping center down at one-twelfth and I-5. I think it's called Freeway Center, or something like that. And, and this, this layout would really meet that standard. You can see the, the wheel stops, the car bumpers, for the most part, aren't intruding into the pedestrian space. So you've got a nice, nice wide sidewalk to use there. And, and this building's also a good example of, of what the standards look like, in terms of not just pedestrian amenities, but building design. This has, you know, transparency, it's got the canopies, building mounted lighting, so this would probably be a good example of a project that would meet the, the proposed standards. I think this, this site particularly, right now, is Zone B2. So, this, because there are no B2 standards, this really exceeds the current requirements. But hopefully, we would get more development along the lines of this. So that's all I have, and I am open to questions.
Thank you Dave, any commissioners with questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Art, I just have a quick question. I mean, for me, after reading some of the public comment that we had, and having worked on Evergreen Way, I'm, I'm very interested in, you know, thinking about how this would impact Evergreen Way. Just a point of clarification, the current standard that you have pictured right there, that does not meet the E1 requirements and sidewalk requirements?
That's correct, that's, that's an existing five-to-six-foot wide sidewalk. So while it might meet the basic engineering public work standard for a six-foot sidewalk, it would not meet the street designation standard for, well, it's either going to be a pedestrian street, or a, I think there was one other... Connector street, correct. So in either case, it's going to have to have a wider sidewalk with a planter strip.
Yeah, i-if I may say, like, having, you know, when, when I used to work on Evergreen, having walked up and down that road, it, you know, the sidewalks are, sidewalks are not very pleasant to use, not very good user experience. And on top of that, it's, looking at that photo, there's a lot of instances like that, where it's going to be a very difficult, you know, basically, to borrow a military term or analogy, fighting through the hedgerows to, to kind of like correct it. So, it's not an unenviable task. You know, so I do really support putting, you know, improvements between the roadway and the sidewalk. My other question is, like, going back to the, you know, kind of like working to make this usable, working to improve user experience of the sidewalks there. I mean, one interesting point that, bit of data that I learned from community transit was that, you know, the, the number of trips that occur on the swift along Evergreen Way are usually two miles long, so it's people commuting from their house to their job or to groceries. So it's very much like a linear downtown, in, so to speak. And the, my other thought is, like, with that, though, we're working to seek, we're, we're working to increase usability, do these streets, designations also come with like a requirement that like future development puts parking lots in back, so that stores are front to the streets? Because at the end of the day, like, you know, good road design requires space, placemaking and space-making, and there are certain ratios of between buildings that really facilitate that. Do these streets, do these sidewalk requirements have those requirements that facilitate that? Is, is my question also clear?
Yeah, I think so. And, and to try to respond to that, if we're talking about parking lot location, that is going to be more a function, or more, more addressed in Chapter thirty-four, which is the parking chapter. And I believe there is already a standard in there that says for certain streets, we may have called out Evergreen, that the parking cannot be located between the building and the street. It has to be either behind or offset. And then, as far as additional design standards, there are certainly pedestrian connection requirements. And so, not only do you have to be able to have a walkable public sidewalk, but you have to be able to get to it from, from the building, or from the development. So we'll make sure that the standards address that, as well as access to transit stops. We need to make sure there's a clear path to the transit stop if one happens to be along a property frontage.
Oh, I'm unmuted now, that answers my question very well, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any additional commissioners with questions?
Yeah, this is Michael Finch, I had a few questions.
Sure.
So I'm looking at page four of the, of the memo, this is Table thirty-three dash one. And it strikes me that the improvements and the restrictions for TOD and pedestrian streets may result in increased cost to a redevelopment than they would to a connector residential or a undesignated street. Have these requirements been, have you received feedback from economic development or, or developers on these requirements?
I have not received any direct feedback with regard to the cost of implementing some of these improvements. I do know that as we were drafting some of the building design standards, and many of these are taken from the Building Form and Design Chapter, Chapter twelve, that in going through our evaluation, we had not heard from developers any complaints about the cost of some of these standards. And as you recall, many of them are based on current metro standards. And, and so we've had a chance to test those. Not a huge number of buildings have been built under the standards, but at the same time, we've not heard a lot of negative feedback about the cost of implementing them. And if, if David Stahlheim, do you have any additional thoughts? Or have anybody's reached out to you, feel free to share. But, but I certainly have not heard any complaints.
Yeah, this is David Stahlheim, and I'll just point out that the, when you look at the street designation maps, there are not any new streets that are designated TOD, that were not designated TOD as part of Metro Everett. So there's no additional areas, so the areas in purple that are on the map that David's showing right now, there's, there's no new additions there. Pedestrian, there, there are, um, Dave, pedestrian are red. So there are some pedestrian connections out on Evergreen Way, but those are all in the areas that are now currently designated as Evergreen mixed use. And so those, those standards are largely in place in all those areas anyhow. But we, what we did try to avoid was designating any streets, we anticipate when, when light rail comes, and we have stations located outside of metro, is that we would be looking at street designation changes in those areas. But we didn't apply that until we kind of get through that, that process of what's going to happen with light rail in the future.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's wise. I mean, I guess that, from my perspective, I, I want to make sure that we are doing what we can to focus development and redevelopment in the areas where we collectively think it's the best to be located. I would hate for new projects to spring up in places where that wasn't the intent, when, when the goal was to increase density downtown, for example. And so I think it's, it's wise not to get too far out of our skis relative to, you know, what the impact of light rail might be. I just look at these tables, and, you know, if rents are approximately the same on a per-foot basis for apartments, whether you're, you know, out near Everett Mallway or in downtown Everett, but the cost of the building is significantly greater in downtown, I would hate to see developers choose more auto-friendly locations, as opposed to increasing the density and the retail synergies to come with that density in downtown. So I want, I just want to make sure that we're, we're thinking about this in a comprehensive manner, because I think this is an opportunity to both provide some controls, but also incentives to focus development in the right areas.
Yeah, and I think that, those are the conversations that we had during Metro Everett, and the, you know, the, if you did an overlay of where those TOD streets are and pedestrian streets, you'll also see that the heights are much taller as well. And so we're, we are providing the developer with a lot more development capacity as well, compared to the other areas.
Yeah, no, I, I get that, I don't know that the market is looking for that level of density or capacity at this point, I think it's...
Sure, right.
At this point, it's a project, right? So it's not, it's not going from seven to twenty stories, it's going from zero to seven stories, or two to seven stories. And so I think that's the, the more narrowed focus, at least for the foreseeable future, that we need to be looking at. And I guess a finer question I had, relative to Table thirty-three one, was, under the TOD, I'm just not quite sure I understand this, it's a structured parking integrated with other building, ten percent of, of front building facade. So explain to me what that means.
Yeah, what that is referring to is the amount of linear frontage that the building has on one of the designated streets. So, if, you know, if, if you have a, a structure that happens to have parking, a, a new building, say, you know, an office building or something, and then you've got a parking structure, which is sort of immediately adjacent to that along the street frontage, these designations would limit the amount of the street frontage that, or the linear dimension of the, the parking structure along the street frontage. So TOD would be only ten percent, so that's pretty restrictive, whereas connector street would be fifty percent of the, basically the building's frontage.
Right, then TOD, minimum lot dimensions... Right, then TOD minimum lot dimensions, what would that be, I guess? Is it, is it, does the 10% exclude parking as a use, given that low limitation?
It would make it challenging for sure if, if it is more of a freestanding parking structure. If it's more integrated into the building design and put underground, no, you could do that. Because you would still have street level, retail, commercial, or whatever. So the parking structure wouldn't actually be fronting. It would be underground. It's only where the parking is at grade, is my interpretation of this, where parking is essentially visible from the street level.
I see. So that specific instance would be a parking structure with other uses at street level as opposed to a single purpose parking structure?
Correct, yeah.
And this is David Stahlheim again. If you recall, we had a somewhat similar conversation about the, the depth of the, how deep TOD use had to be. And so the standards are in the code actually talk about a depth. So if you had 120-foot deep lot, 10% of the frontage could be in parking, but you could have parking still on that ground floor that's back behind. But you just have to have an active, have active uses along that street front. So put your Starbucks cafe, you know, whatever, you know, things like that up front. You just don't, you can't have like Everpark, for example, if that was a TOD street. You cannot have a whole block that has just nothing but a parking structure.
Right. And, and so that indirectly gets at one of the prior questions too, about putting parking behind. This standard might serve that purpose as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions or comments?
Commissioner, this is Commissioner Labra. Do we need to discuss that it's nine o'clock and we're going to extend the meeting?
I was just going to raise that. By my clock, I'm showing it's 9:04 PM. And per Planning Commission rules, I believe, we, for us to continue past nine o'clock, we do need to have a vote. Is that, is that my, am I correct in my understanding?
That is correct.
Okay. So I, I know we're, we're kind of in the middle of something, of a, of a, of a topic here, and we haven't heard yet many public comment with regard to sidewalks. But I suppose we should probably put out here to the, to the commissioners, this issue of, of our nine o'clock ending time. Anyone?
I'm okay.
Mr. Chair, I would just ask how long the staff anticipates to need to, to complete its presentation?
We're going to do one other session on the airport, port, and Navy after Dave's thing on streets. And we were going to have public input at the end of, of that next session. So I would, I venture to guess, Chapter 17 won't take very long. I would imagine that we have about another 30 minutes.
My follow-up would be, is it possible to continue this at the next meeting?
It is possible to continue at the next meeting. I know that we have at least two folks from the public, from the Navy and Port, that have been probably waiting patiently. But they're probably fine with coming on as long as we cover their thing first at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, it's your call, I would say.
Well, I, I honestly, I, I am concerned about the time. I think, one, it's getting way, it's been a long meeting. I wonder about people's ability to really stay focused. And if we're losing some of the message here, as well as I know people need to get home and get back to their lives. So I guess I do have some concerns about continuing maybe throughout for, for a whole half hour. But I, I think it probably would be helpful if we could at least finish this, this section with regard to sidewalks. And maybe invite any public comment about, about this, just, just to bring this to a close. I don't know what the commission thinks about that.
I'm okay with that.
Sorry, Michael. This is Commissioner Holland. I would move that we extend the meeting until 9:30, and at which time we close it down. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Do we need to go to a vote on that?
Yeah.
Kathy, can you call through?
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Tinsel? Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry Kathy, I was muted.
Okay, thanks. Is that a yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Labra?
Yes.
Terri Anasak?
Yes. Okay, then with that, with, with regard to the sidewalk portion, was there any additional commissioners' questions? Okay, not wanting to give anybody short shrift here, but we do only have 21 minutes by my, by my clock. So maybe, David, should we move into the airport and Navy compatibility? And hopefully have time for some questions?
Sure, yeah, Dave, if you want to exit out of, fantastic. So David Stahlheim, and I am going to, I don't have a PowerPoint, but I have a, go to, go to the project website and walk you through the project website and get to this. So if you go to the Rethink Zoning and you go to the Rethink Zoning Library, what we've been doing and getting to the Planning Commission and to the public is that we have is summaries of things. And I kind of like to call them the Cliff Note version of, of the code chapters. And so the subject is about Chapter 17. And so I'm going to open up the Chapter 17, and we got a one-page summary. It really says that, you know, first off, that under the Growth Management Act, that we have to do airport compatibility. This is a requirement. The city adopted the standards back in 2015. What we're looking at is narrowing the types of land use actions that are subject to the notice on title and the notice to the airport as part of the amendments to Chapter 17 at this time. At the same time, what we're looking at is, is doing some things because of staff workload and our, our land use staff. Right now, the code has a, the responsibility of staff to make sure that an applicant does all this paperwork with the Federal Aviation Administration. And so we've taken that out, but we've advised the applicant that there are requirements that they have to do and when they're adjacent to the airport. And then when we started talking with the airport last year about this and some of the concerns of staff, we talked about scaling back the projects that give notice to the airport. And so the proposal has notice rather than every development project within about two miles of the airport. We have projects that are basically the larger projects, 10,000 square feet of gross floor area or, or any building that has, or structures that are taller than 30 feet. And so these are the types of projects that the airport is mostly concerned with, the very large projects or the tall projects. They also have worries about anything in the immediate facility vicinity, excuse me, that are hazardous material. And so those are the most, the big concerns with them. At the same time, we've had some conversations over the last couple of years with both the port and Navy and about some compatibility issues. And, and actually, the Navy has some compatibility standards that are already built within Chapter 26 of the code in the M2 zone. And with the code consolidation for the industrial zones, we're going to repeal that chapter. And so what we've done is, is pulled those compatibility standards that basically talked about landscaping and, and some other things that are adjacent to Naval Station Everett to make sure that people, that the, the station is protected from, from people intrusions into, into the naval base and things like that. At the same time, the port is concerned about the working waterfront and the impacts on the working waterfront. And we had talked about some standards and some things to do more consultation and notice on title similar to the airport. And with the COVID-19 and other staff changes at the department, we decided that we needed to back off on some of those provisions for notice on title. And have, so the, the chapter that you have does not have those, those provisions in right now. But it, but it does have the same things in the airport that we will, will notify both the port and Navy while we get those larger projects in vicinity that we have a land use application and start the consultation as part of, of that process. Do want to note that when you go to our project website, if you get, click on the Get Involved tab, and this is good for the public, but also for the Planning Commission, you've been getting comment letters. But rather than try to sort them all yourself, we're trying to make it easy on, on you, us, and the public. And so we have all, the comment letters are up in a public comment tracker right now. So you'll see that the Port of Everett submitted comments on this subject and Naval Station Everett did. Quickly, the Naval Station Everett supports the comments. They have some editorial changes in, in some texts there that taken a look at. And, and those are things that we'd be glad to try to incorporate in the next draft that we bring back to the Planning Commission for review. Port of Everett's comments, they included some of the, the history of the comments that we have, but they also had a suggestion that, that kind of a compromise to, rather than a notice on title, that we give a similar notice, the same language to applicants. And so you can see that when you look at their comment letter, that they suggest some things in there. And so we'll be taking a look at that. I want to consult with our land use staff and the administrative tasks that that might be involved in before I make a commitment to that. But those are comments that the Port of Everett just submitted today. Also, I just want to note there are other comments. I know Tina Hokinson is on the line. And the comments that Dave had about Chapter 33. And so she has comments that she submitted in detail about some of her concerns about streets and sidewalks and trees along Evergreen Way in particular. So I urge the Planning Commission, the public, to take a look at that. As well as, there's been some other comments that have come in since your last Planning Commission meeting. And most of them based on comments or process. Some of them are focused on some Title 15 procedures that are there. But there are other comments that you've gotten as part of that. So, so with that, that's, that's it for, for me. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, David. Any commissioners with questions for David? Hearing done? Okay, I don't know, David, did you also address the, the follow-up for the rethink? Or do you think we could put that off to next meeting and maybe move to public comment at this time?
Yeah, I think we can move on to public comment. The follow-up was for, for you folks, if you had any other things from previous meetings. But today, we can move on to public comment.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I would like to, go ahead.
Terri Anasak, this is Commissioner Lark. I just have one follow-up for the, the rethink. And I just want to throw it in here really quick. One of the things, you know, I'm sorry I wasn't able to attend the meeting on June 2nd. And I watched it, I reviewed it, I looked through the, the plan. And one of the things I think that, I think it's a good plan, and I think it reaches out to North Everett, South Everett, and to the neighborhoods. So that outreach is good. But one thing I think we need to explicitly and intentionally do is reach out to traditionally marginalized and disenfranchised communities who've been locked out of housing and access to housing, traditionally communities who've been disproportionately impacted by redlining. And so until we do that, I, I mean, I think that is a huge missing, missing gap in the required outreach for our, our rethink zoning when it comes to, like, as we prepare and think about, you know, the housing component that's going on further down the line. And then I'll leave, my final thought is that, I know at the top of the meeting, David mentioned a 2024 timeline for addressing single-family housing. I have some concerns about that. I think it's a little too far out. One of the biggest challenges, one of the biggest missteps that we had in the last decade was post-2000 recession. We had a, we had bad housing policy and we continued to have, you know, unsupported housing policy that, that constrained economic growth and opportunity and wealth building. And as we seek to recover from a COVID depression or recession, making sure that we have good housing policy that allows for growth and equitable growth is essential. So I don't think 2024 would be a viable timeline to start, you know, tackling that issue. So I'd really like to get a commitment from the planning department that, you know, to reach out and have a, have a meeting and a community-based meeting that gets, that gets inputs from communities that have been traditionally marginalized or excluded from housing markets and have just been disproportionately impacted by redlining.
Thank you. So with that, I, I know we are running up against our, our deadline of 9:30 tonight. Don't want to not hear from, from people who've been waiting and from people from the public who have comments. So if we could call through, this would be your opportunity to comment about anything that we've talked about here on the agenda tonight, as well as anything that's not on the agenda. But do ask you to be respectful of, of everybody's time. And so Kathy, could you call through our guests?
Yeah. Glenn Kasey. Laura Gurley.
Yes, ma'am. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
This is Laura Gurley with the Port of Everett. Thank you. And I wanted to commend Dave. He's been very collaborative and very proactive with making sure that we know when new versions of this proposed code change is coming out. So thank you for that, Dave. We did submit a round of comments back in February, and that is what is posted on the website that Dave showed you right now. However, I did send in new comments based on the most current round of the draft that came out on June 4th. But Dave and I were having technical issues, so that is not posted on the website yet. I hope we got it figured out after about 6 o'clock tonight. So it's in Dave's inbox. So hopefully you will be able to see those soon. And one just other comment that we, I didn't point out in my comment letter, I totally understand that city staff is completely pinched for just having enough people to do the job. I think a lot of entities, especially public agencies, are feeling that right now. But that won't last forever and hopefully not as long as this code is going to be in effect. So I think we also need to be forward-thinking for how much longer the code changes that we're proposing right now are going to be in effect, as opposed to the city being short-staffed. So think long range on that too, relative to some of the changes that you proposed. And that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
So for Naval Station Everett, I just want to express an appreciation for the Planning Commission and your considered review. And also to thank staff for their collaboration with Naval Station Everett in the update process. And I'm looking forward to continued discussions. I'm, I'm not sure how this meeting is going to proceed forward, but you have Captain Davis' support letter. And I guess that's the end of my comment. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Ismail Mohammed?
Kathy, you're breaking up a little bit on my end. I think you called Ismail Mohammed?
Yes.
Okay.
Coming on. Mr. Mohammed? How about extension 717?
Can you hear me? Sorry.
Oh, there you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was on mute. This is Ismail Mohammed. Sorry, no comment at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, extension 7187.
Yeah, this is Dylan Sluter with the Master Builders Association. I appreciate the commission's time looking at it and staff's time on rethink zoning. I know with COVID, it's caused some difficulties, and I look forward to re-engaging on this. I know I met with David Stahlheim and Alan earlier on, but obviously with the issues we're facing with COVID, I sort of transitioned into focusing on the permit extensions and things that were urgent and demanding of that. But I'm looking forward to re-engaging and being a part of this process and hopefully getting more developers in participation on this. I know Commissioner Finch had some great points as well, Commissioner Lark. It's just, when we look at this policy, I know that there's struggles with funding, but I think that we should look at doing the most we possibly can. And I know some of the single-family zones, there were some positive changes that were influenced from Houseville 1923 and the funding that came from that. And unfortunately, it looks like that's going to be put off for a little while. But I hope that it does come back sooner rather than later. And again, I just look forward to being a part of the process, and I thank you all for all your work.
Thank you. Lastly, Tina Hokinson?
Hi, I just want to say thank you to David. And I, it's been so much easier this time to follow along on the web with and access the documents in the library and love all the links. Very much appreciate all the work and the responsiveness of you and the rest of the staff. And I will have more to say, I'm sure, on sidewalks and trees and the experience of people on the, on the street. And especially, I'm very interested, of course, in along Evergreen Way. Thank you.
Thank you. That would be that list. We're done.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I would just remind everybody that if you didn't get a chance to speak up about or to comment, you can always send an email or a letter to the Planning Department, and that will get before the commission and get posted to the website. Do we have any other business as we come to a close here to our commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Alan Giffen. And I just wanted to say, as my last official Planning Commission meeting, as a staff member, I want to say thank you to the commissioners for the job that you do. Our job as staff and city planners is dependent upon the direction and the guidance that you provide. We appreciate that you do this out of the love of your community. It's unpaid volunteer job, and the many hours that you put into preparation for meetings and participation in the meetings is very much appreciated by the staff as well as administration and city council. Your advice as a filter for the city council is a very important function for all of these policy and property planning, infrastructure planning decisions that you make over the course of the years. And so I want to say how much I've appreciated the Planning Commission. I've worked with many good commissioners over the years. And you guys just really make our jobs that much easier because you, of your engagement and your caring for the community. And so with that, I'm going to say thank you to all of you. Thank you to the public and to staff for great support over the years.
Well, thank you, Alan. It's been a marathon tonight. We've kept you here, I think, as long as, as long as we possibly can. And I know it's been, what I've seen, your contributions to the city and the legacy you leave is very appreciated. And I guess we hope that maybe we won't see you sitting behind the desk, but maybe we'll see in the audience at future meetings. Any other business or comments from commissioners? Anyone?
This is Commissioner Zalinski. I just wanted to respond in kind to Alan. For the five years or so I've been on the commission, Alan and his staff have done a great job of helping the commissioners get through these sometimes difficult questions that are put to us. And the guidance that he and David have done through the years have been, really made our jobs on the commission much easier, I think. So thank you, guys, both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
To say, as, this is Tina Hokinson. When I worked for the county, Alan was very much appreciated by staff who worked with him from the county also. He is very much admired. So thank you for your service, Alan. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, thank you for your attention and time this evening. We got through a lot of business, and we will see you soon. We will call this meeting adjourned.